I'd like to call this meeting, which is a back-in session sort of meeting here for a recall for today, May 26. And this meeting of the Rockland County Board of Commissioners is designed to look at the agenda, and that's all the business we do have prescribed at this time. And unless you have something to start off with, I'm going to ask for approval of the agenda as presented. So move. Move.
Second.
Second discussion, here now in favor indicated by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Agenda is approved. Layups.
Sir.
Budget overview.
Okay, I'm going to go through this tab by tab. If there's nothing in the tab that you need me to expand on, I will expand on that. But basically, we're just going to run through the budget messages. This is a summary of the entire budget. If you have any questions during the budget message, certainly ask me, but we'll give more detail if you need more detail throughout the tabs. On page one of the budget message, there's two things I want to point out. The first is that the budget, overall budget is $155 million with $113 million roughly for the general fund, and that will be in a tab that we'll discuss. When we first started the process, we were $33.6 million in a deficit between a balancing, which is equivalent to .43 cents on the tax dollar. The breakdown was a still of .27.28 cents. The community college was .46 cents, and the general fund was 12.72 cents. On pages two and three, again, this is the 14th consecutive year, no tax increase. I did cover the property tax information in our budget presentation, but if there are any questions on those, I'd be glad to answer those questions on the taxes. If not, I wanted just to point out on the bottom under sales tax on the third page, we projected a modest 3.5% increase over current year. And that's just based on trends. Of course, it could be a lot better, but for anticipation, is it to be lower? Page three, elections has increased this year, but that's just because it's the municipal election year. The register of deeds is very conservative. Development's starting to plateau, but we're still seeing a little bit of growth. The revenues in EMS are based on current year's experience and requested fee change that we'll talk about later, and an increase in our public health fees, public health fees for the public health dental office, the mobile dental unit, and the medical unit, changes in fees. At the bottom of the page and on the next page, on page four, just a little history, the hold homeless counties received revenues from 2007 to 2014 and stopped receiving these funds when Medicaid costs exceed sales tax, right? With the recent increases in sales tax, we have seen a comeback, and so we're able to budget money for this upcoming year for the hold homeless. Any questions, sir, or? And if I'm going too fast, please come and slow down a little bit. On page four, also on page four, you see interest earned has increased drastically due to the higher interest rates and the large amount of funding we received from COVID funds, which has allowed us to increase our portfolio, investment portfolio of earnings. And the transfer of capital reserve transfers have decreased to a lower project cost for this upcoming year. This past year, we had some large projects like the DSS renovations and the radius that we purchased for public safety. General fund balance, typically, we budget any given year at $2.5 million plug each year. This year is a $4.3 million plug to handle the pay study increase and provide a bridge to next year, which is the revaluation year, where we will recommend a rate needing to accommodate the needs of the county at that time. Health insurance, as you've seen in the past, we've had an increase, an increase, an increase. I think last year, the year before, it was about a 30% increase, and this year, fortunately, through the efforts of HR and findings, we were able to have a zero increase in our health insurance and then zero reductions in claims benefits. On page five, the overall personnel changes will decrease the county's FTE by nine, roughly 9.5 positions, and most of them are for the landfill. As you know, we're contracting out of landfills, so those positions no longer are part of our personnel management. Only three new positions are recommended, unfreeze the tax appraiser position after the revow, add income maintenance, case worker three, and a social worker emergency duty. And these positions, I think, are 50% or 75% matched. We may need to come back to you guys. We're really not sure how Medicaid expansion will affect us. I know you all don't like approving positions during the middle of the year, but we don't want to put positions in here just because if we have any issues with Medicaid expansion or see we need additional staff, we will come back to you guys in the middle of the year if we need to. We're also recommending three reclassifications in DSS, which will reflect a budget reduction. Page six and seven. As I mentioned in the budget presentation, we have over 50% of our workforce that has less than five years' experience, so we're trying to retain employees, and we have a difficult time recruiting, so we're trying to better turn ways to recruit staff, increasing our ability to be able to advertise other places we haven't advertised. We're recommending a 4% COLA for all current staff with vacant positions. We're only asking for an increase of 2%, and that will help us with style of compression based on the employee versus the position. We're recommending a 3% merit increase that we did last year. We're also recommending to do another pay study through the Piedmont Triad Regional Council that ties directly to the individual employee, not the position. In the past, it's been tied to positions we want to focus more on the employee than the position in the next upcoming year. Now, our overall view would be that some of these positions will start to plateau off, so if you see they do an evaluation of positions, they may not recommend an increase because we're starting to get where I think that we should be, you know, feeling places go towards. And Don and I talked about a potential way to be able to have every year, we don't have to worry about a pay plan, they can just move through a step every year. We did have an increase of 6% in our retirement, and that's just across the board. That equates to about $300,000. Is this the last year, or is this another year there?
I think there's potential for them to move forward.
Okay. Page seven, at the bottom of page seven and page eight, these are our large capital fund requests, and they're really not too large, but to maintain our annual desktop and laptop replacement cycle, replace some of our core IT infrastructure, replace the MDTs in the sheriff's, the deputy vehicles.
Yes.
Replace one of the HVAC units at the EOC, like we do every year, replace two ambulances with one new and one remount, and the protective gear that goes with those employees, purchase a fleet for our, the general fleet. Right now, we have these little, I don't know what they are, these little Kia cars that, I mean, you can't fit three people in, so we're asking for a larger one to be able to take more people around in. They're used quite often, they're checked out quite often. And replacing the vehicle environmental health. On page nine is the capital improvement plan, and this is, there's $200,000 of this year's budget to go towards $600,000 for a price of a $1 million software update or upgrade for 2025, correct?
Yes, sir. There's- We can update on that later, right?
Yes, sir. And we are working on, Charlie brings up a good point, Derek and his staff are working on the project list that we had stopped for a while. They're reconfiguring that so it's a better product for you all.
And we go into the CIP, we'll explain that further.
Okay.
That we're doing more comprehensive plans.
We have in here future building expansion of $464,000 to address some future needs we have here at the county, and some of the minor ones are repaid parking at the board of elections, replace Eden EMS roof, seal parking lot of the courthouse, MDT replacement, and replace reasonable library roof. These total are $481,800. Any question on those? 10, education, it's on page 10. Public schools, operational funding is recommended to remain the same. They requested a 2,269% increase in capital outlay. The request was for roughly $21 million. We can address most of these issues, but we recommend the staff along with the school facilities committee to make a recommendation back to both the school board and board commissioners, and that would include using the annual capital allocation, pay go, and debt financing. The community college operational funding is recommended to remain the same. Capital outlay funding is recommended to be the same. Question on those. All right, page 11. Fire districts, there are three fire districts that have requested a tax rate increase. They're Jacobs Creek, Huntsville, and Stokesdale. Derek and I did meet with them, we sat down and discussed it with them about going to a revow. They explained the need for, I think, one is a new building, one to accommodate the growth, one is new equipment, meaning trucks, and the other was manpower. After we listened to them, we believe that their justification was accurate, and they needed the additional funds. I can't remember, we'll get into how much it is per district later. The tendency is to maintain the contingency at 350. We do this every year. I don't watch cinema, and that's only used unless we absolutely have to. Landfill, again, we're contracting operations out with wall recycling. We've absorbed their costs into public utilities and Ronnie's department. And water and sewer enterprise fund, in years past, the general fund has subsidized the water and sewer fund mainly to cover debt. We paid off all the debt we could and moved, I think, just the NTE debt to general fund. So you'll see later on in here that the water and sewer funds are supposed to be self-sustainable with the revenues meeting the expenditures, so no more relying on the general fund to subsidize the enterprise fund, which is the first time since I've been here. Other notable budget items, may notice the new ways we're budgeting in public health and DSS, and this is just to provide an increase in transparency and accountability. Basically, this, what I've discussed briefly in a nutshell, is 22 through 44. We'll go through page, tab two. This is just a budget briefing that's recommended by the departments, recommended for each department. The summary again is the total's $155 million, general fund's $112, the tax rate is 69.5 cents, and the value of the penny is $834,215. The next page over, the large contributors to the increase in revenues is the ad valorem, the sales tax, public health, and interest earned. There is a decrease in transfer from other funds of about $2.2 million. And on the expenditure side, the large contributors to the increase in expenditures is the proposed adjustments for the employee compensation and some in public health. Basically, that's the increase in the operational funds. Tab three is your capital outlay, and you can see, you guys have this, I think, the budget for 10 days or two weeks, if I can remember. But anyway, we've talked about some of, a lot of these items, but basically, we have $2.2 million, and the manager recommended budget for capital outlay. Most of it that you see is public safety. I'd be glad to answer any questions on capital outlay if you've got any questions on any of those.
A lot of these items are something that we've already brought to you to use for current funds, or through the budget, we found a different source of a fund other than using general fund revenue.
Okay.
Let me ask you a question. Some of these items that have been requested that are not in this year's budget, are they included, maybe only a capital plan for future years?
Well, some, you don't see in here, we've either worked with the departments to find it within their existing budget.
Okay.
And some of them, we just, we're not recommending at all, and some are-
Future years.
Yep.
Yeah, there are a few, especially in the engineering budget. Some of those you will see in our recommendations for the fiscal year '25 budget.
Page, tab four is the general government, it's the overall personnel change. We were going to decrease FTE by 1.44%. Most of these, again, when it comes up to percentages from the landfill, again, only three positions that we're asking for, and that's the unfreeze the tax appraiser position, add income maintenance worker case three, and a social worker for emergency duties. Tab six is the vehicle replacement. Out of the vehicles, we're asking for 11, six for the sheriff, one for general fleet, two for environmental health, and the two ambulances I mentioned earlier. Tab six is your vision, mission, and strategic focus areas. These are guidelines, guiding principles for operations and budget preparations based on what we discussed during the budget retreat. Tab seven is the fire districts. Again, the three fire districts are requesting an increase. Jacob Creek is going from, was asking to go from 9.5 cents to 12 cents. Stokesdale's asked to go from 10 cents to 12.5 cents, and Huntsville from 8.5 cents to 11 cents. They are all compliant with providing their 99 forms in their or land or their armed force.
That's all departments, or just us?
Just these three. We're working on these small ones. They're all caught up, just this year, I think we have a few that haven't given us theirs yet, but we'll work with them to get theirs.
Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
You haven't actually had to withhold a check because of that happen?
I'm sorry, say it again.
You haven't had to withhold a check to the fire department because of that happen?
No, we have to give a little time because their urions are all different, so they all will come in at the same time, so we have to look at when their urines are.
Tab eight, you have B schedules. You'll see increases at EMS, public utilities, sheriff's office. Public health, that's several to remove and some to increase. And you services have a few new ones. Those are being reimbursed by San Diego. Nine is just your budget calendar. 10 is the draft, and it's all talked about, budget now, shadows, and all the things that need approval from, and we have to provide the state and all these other different agencies. Now, 11 through 14 is where we get into individual departments, and we can go through it, and I'll ask, you know, what you guys want to talk about, expand on whatever you see in there. Under 11, what you'll have in there is the summary of revenues, expenditures, performance metrics, and the line item budget. And starting with government body under 11, is there anything that you want to discuss in the governing body? It's pretty self-explanatory, there's really nothing added there. Page 12, the county managers tab in there, there's an increase, but we had a budget analyst position that we all added in the middle of the year or after, excuse me, after Mr. Murray left. You'll see opposite on the IT side where the IT budget went down because we didn't fill Derek's position, so it actually came net to the good. 13 is public information officer. Nothing really unusual about her budget. Tab 14 is safety and risk management. Again, you'll see some of these small budgets increase, but they're increasing because they're like a department of one or two, and so if they had any type of pay adjustments with the pay plan last year, it's going to show larger, but it should plateau by next 15, I'm sorry.
I don't know if the rest of them had a chance to speak with Chris, but I understand we got a good report yesterday as far as cost of-
What kind of insurance was that insurance?
It was-
Workers' comp.
Yeah, workers' comp. We had an A+. And Commissioner Burress said, "We got to hold you to it now. If you come up with an A+, we're going to hold you to a high standard."
Yeah, I think he said it was first time he-
Yeah, or so. Finance is, there's really not a whole lot to point out in finance. 15, I'm sorry, tab 15. Tab 16 is tax. That's just, again, to unfreeze the tax appraiser position after the revow. 17 is legal, there's really nothing outstanding in that other than the current attorney salary is higher than the previous attorney. 18, tab 18 is, again, the elections, nothing really large about that other than the municipal elections, which are coming up, and they have offsetting revenues that municipalities pay the county. 19, register of deeds, he'll be bringing in more revenues than expenditures, and he typically does a great job with the budget, so I don't have anything to add to his or the automation and preservation budget.
Definitely good to have positive flow for that department, something we didn't have before he took office.
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
There's a lesson there because we just assumed everything was fine, and it was a negative financial thing for the county, and it's not that way.
And so we turned around, we can tell you that. 20 and 21, we're buying these two. This is IT, and again, GIS is plain Jane budget IT. They've gone down by 8%, and a lot of that goes to Derek's ability to be able to officially manage it responsibly and work with the staff to be able to absorb his position. 22 is engineering and public buildings. Capitalized capital was reduced drastically from last year to this year in the CIP, and that's what we mentioned earlier. Operations, you see an increase in utilities and service maintenance, and a landfill operation was added to this department. 23, non-departmental, largest contributor last year was the compensation pay plan. Again, the health insurance remained the same with the increase and a reduction in 24 has EMS, it has fire marshal, it has emergency management, non-moral communications, emergency services, and medical examiner, and nothing has changed. The medical examiner is just how many bodies the medical examiner has to examine, and it fluctuates. This year, I think we had to add additional 10,000 because we didn't have enough in there, so, but other than that, all the other ones seem to be pretty simplistic. 25 is the sheriff's budget, and the only thing there is the additional SRO officers. This changed, obviously, the vehicles, but nothing else has changed. In the jail, animal control, and other public safety, I don't see anything in there that's, some of you had asked a few questions, but I think I answered those, but nothing's really outstanding in the sheriff's department budget. 26 is the animal shelter. There was a slight increase in their budget. It's mainly due for, again, for the director's position. She went up five pay grades according to the pay plan. They need, they have asked, requested for a new security cameras and a capital outlay. They need them. We have several incidents down there where we need footage, and often comes out rain, so it's very much a need down there.
And that is being funded through their reserve account from donations and previous building capital that we had on hand, so it's not coming out of the general fund. And that is a fund that can be used for any outfit of that building.
Has the floor issue been resolved?
Yes, sir.
Can all that expenses behind us?
Yes, sir. There was a phased approach with animal shelter plans that we're doing to address the floor, the drainage and stuff, and I think we're like all four, four. I think all we have to do left now is jet the drains. Okay. Lance, real quick, what sort of security issues do they typically have at animal shelter?
We've had people come in and throw food, employees, as far as dog food, cat food. We've had instances where people are quite vocal to staff, and we use that footage because oftentimes we'll get complaints on staff, and so we make sure we have the capabilities to make sure we can figure out what's true and what's not true.
Okay, that unfortunately is a frequent-
Yeah. When you deal with children and animals, it stirs up a lot. 27 is field inspections, planning and zoning, code enforcement, and central permitting. The only, I guess, larger is professional services and planning and zoning, and it's got an increase for anticipation of more cell towers, but has offsetting revenues. 28 is the airport, nothing significant there, we just give them an annual contribution of $70,000, and $16,667 to go towards their non-primary entitlement grant, which used to be a vision 100 grant. It's a match towards theirs.
As far as the construction out there, everything has been funded at state level. I mean, where is all that?
I-
As far as Justin, I kind of turned that over to you, I don't see an error.
Well, Commissioner Hall.
You know, a couple of years ago, the state was able to provide a grant for about $7 million, and they've gone through the engineering, I've talked to the engineer a few weeks ago, they're getting ready to go out for bids on some of that work, so you'll probably see advertisement for bids within the next 60 days for that work.
I believe that the slowdown was a change in the way that the state reviews the environmental impact.
It was.
Now, that has changed, so that created some time.
Yeah, we were able to talk to our leadership team at the state, and they were able to get things accelerated.
Tab 29 is economic development. There's just a few things to point out there. In the economic development projects, the biggest change we had here was Prentis Investment. It went up significantly, and incentives reflects that commitment. And just for Commissioner Barris, there is other economic development, this is just our annual contribution for the maintenance of industrial park reasonable pays happening to have. Quotient extension, there's really nothing there that's changed. Soil and water is one to briefly talk about. We added, this year, we added $100,000 in their budget for a farmland preservation reserve. This would be a new program where counties are allowed to create an ordinance to establish a farmland preservation established by general statute. It's a managing grant from the state, the county, and landowners. What we've seen is the county is 25% landowners, 25% the state's 50%. Right now, they have, I think it maxed right now $5,000 available, but it sounds like they're looking to change and add more to that fund.
That is correct.
And so what I'm understanding from this fund is the farmer has to voluntarily put at least 10 acres into the program, and we're paying ultimately for an easement, and then it locks the property up for perpetuity.
That is correct.
And then, if you ever want to take it out, the farmer or the then-owner would have to pay that money back.
That is correct. So that would be, that is the generals of the state's rules, that it would have to be paid back at that time. The contribution amount would be set on the ordinance that we choose at a later date. And the price that is paid is the difference from the farm to ferment and the market rate for the property, so that's what they're buying, is the difference.
Okay, so it's not the market value, it's actually the difference between the market and the present use value?
That's correct. And as part of this, Jason's team would develop an application process where they would submit them in. He would have a ranking tool that was approved by his board, and you guys, they would rank, and then we would determine that that would potentially be a property that we would like to make eligible for this one.
And what's the turnaround time from us establishing this account to getting any paperwork approved at the state level?
It appears to be at this time, Jason is far along, he has his ordinance ready to come to you guys, and it appears to be a pretty quick turnaround at this time. They're wanting to get this program all right.
I'm very familiar with that because I'm doing it with a different organization, and it's really about two years.
Jason indicated that this one, they're trying to do it much faster than that. They're looking to use resources from multiple counties to try to, with lawyers and things involved, they're trying to speed this process up. There are very few counties that are far enough that they're buying the properties yet. It's still in the early stages, but I'd say that's to be determined, but the goal was for this to be a quicker process.
And as far as interest from farmers, do we have any idea, has he had any feedback?
He has had feedback, and he has had farmers show interest. He does not know if they would submit the application, but he has had farmers show interest. He mentioned several different farmers yesterday when I was discussing it.
Okay, and- Okay, and are those larger farms or smaller?
There is a mix.
There's a mix, okay.
And the thing is, is ultimately that rating guy is how we wanted, how we as a county want to treat that, if he could determine his ranking, you know, a larger farm could receive weight or smaller, it's all in a ranking program.
And as far as money that we put in this program, let's say that we don't have any interest or any applicants, since it's earmarked in this line item, is it stuck in that line item or can we put more money into that line item?
You can always, most of the time it will be a program that we would most likely continue to fund and continue to grow those funds, but if in a given time period someone didn't sign up, it would just roll to the next time period that they would open it up for applications.
Is there any reason for us not to put more money into that?
They actually, they actually asked for a million, we cut it down to a hundred because we think it's a valid program, you guys have shown interest in making sure that we can preserve the farmland and we have rural characteristics and so we at least wanted to get it started and so, I mean, it's, a hundred thousand will go out a long way, but we thought about at least trying to get something started.
Would you be comfortable putting more in or?
Yeah.
Is there a number that you'd be comfortable putting more in or is it something that we can add to it later in the year if the need is there?
Yeah, you can add to it with the budget minimum anytime during the year.
Okay, all right, I'm comfortable with that, I just don't know what kind of response we'll get as Jason is getting some, but certainly with the growth we've got, I know there's a need for parts of the county to have some farms there as well, so.
If we can just get it started and if we do see the interest come through, then maybe we can come at you all and say, okay, this half all gone with the hundred thousand, we need X number of dollars more to get, gauge the interest of the farmers.
And maybe when he comes with his ordinance to you, to the group, then maybe that would be the better time to maybe allot more money because he could better explain it because it would be a program that he would be interested in. Okay, thank you.
All right, TAB thirty-two is integrated health, that's the community paramedic program, first professional services increased by eighteen thousand dollars to cover the additional costs for the support program, which will go countywide now, I think it's regional and easily working on the western side, but this will be a countywide program and this funding is funded by KBR, MOE, I think this is the last year KBR?
That is correct.
MOE funds and from prior years and one year of the MAT bridge act grant, which is the Medicaid assistance treatment grant, we got for three years?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're not dancing with them in the future, right?
TAB thirty-three, public health, okay, this budget has increased quite a bit, well over one point three million dollars, but this is, the large increase is in prescription costs, also funding for the COVID vaccine, which is ending, we used to get funds for COVID vaccines, now we're not, so we're going to have to pick up the cost, but they do have an offsetting revenue for these, we went, if you'll see in the fee schedule, it's like, I think from zero to forty-five dollars per person, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this is also related to mobile dental unit at the dental clinic, again, that has offsetting revenues, so the expenditures look large, but they got offsetting revenues to get towards it. Thirty.
We are budgeting these revenues to increase and also this would be budgeting for the dental clinic to be self-sustaining except for the one hundred and fifty thousand due to the grant.
That's the mobile.
No, that's all of them.
Okay.
Self-sustaining except for that grant.
We were assured that it was going to be self-sustaining, so we'll make sure it's self-sustaining. TAB thirty-four, this is just the county's contribution to sand heels, which is our LME MCO for day mark and maintenance of effort. Thirty-five, again, I talked about the positions that we're adding, what we're requesting to add and reclassifying three positions, we did reduce the Medicaid transportation based on historical spending and that's about it in that budget. Thirty-six, veteran services, again, that looks like it's elevated, but it's a department of only one, she went from pay grade eighteen to twenty-three. TAB thirty-seven is our contribution to help incorporated redirections and project safe. Thirty-eight, there's really not a whole lot new services, FYI, U Services now is able to bill for services when they couldn't pass, I want to thank my previous commissioner, Reese Pearl, for kind of spearheading us being able to do that. Thirty-nine, the aging disability and transport services, the county has a relatively small batch compared to state and federal contributions and the county is mostly a pass-through for ADTS. Forty, with the libraries, there's really not a whole lot here other than a slight increase in capital outlay for computers and monitors for the patrons, we're having a hard time trying to fill positions, hard time positions in the library, but not a lot we can do about it. Forty-one is funding for Mark, Garba, Tech Channel, for RCC, which we receive offsetting revenues for this, the Arts Council and fine arts contribution. Forty-two, again, this is the public schools, recommend to fund as we did last year for both operational costs, again, I would recommend that Pat and I have talked, we feel like most of these projects that they're asking for to be funded through current cost allocations, through pay go, through debt financing, but I think it's important that the community, excuse me, the school facilities committee work on this with staff and down the board come back with a recommendation for both commissioners and for the school. RCC is, we're recommending to fund operations that we did last year, you'll see a slight increase in capital amount because debt service, side slabs going down, there's also debt service included for the workforce development. TAB forty-three, these are funds that are transferred from general fund to other funds for other projects, a few things coming out is the debt service fund has workforce development center debt and both the water and sewer, again, we eliminated transfers out, so we wouldn't have to, so the water and sewer fund can be self-sustainable, contingency, again, that's there, we try not to use it, but it's there if we need to. And TAB forty-four on is restricted funds for specific uses, I made a printout for you, it looks like, I'd like to find it. It looks like this, these are restricted funds and I put explanations by each one of them, I'll give you a few minutes to look over them, if there's any questions you can ask Pat and I, but basically these are restricted funds for specific purposes. The Vera Holland Center, Ms. Holland left money to the county for the Vera Holland Center and the stone library, it might not be used towards that, that's an example. The cap here is the FSA flexible spending account plan, that's for employees and employees that come out of their ways, so it's not a check, county tax dollars, it goes straight toward the FSA. Shared savings.
Do you have a question on it or I can give you, I'm tallying the numbers and going to give a handout to you guys soon for the.
Okay, still working on that?
Yes.
Okay.
There's been, over the last, as part of this budget, a lot of people use their shared savings and savings for one-time items over the last several weeks, we've had several requests to come in to eliminate, so it's been using those funds to improve more out of those departments, so I'll break down that.
Any questions on the TAB forty-four, is anything, Pat, that we need to point out? It's pretty.
No, I have no questions. No second question, pretty much.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I really have nothing else to present. Oh, I'm sorry, I do, that's, the capital outlay, do they have that sheet?
It's in the other binder, isn't it?
Okay, so this is what I'm talking about, so in this, you'll see, again, board of elections, the parking lot, the EMS roof replacement, the courthouse and jail parking lot, ceiling only, not resurfacing, the MBT replacements, the reasonable library roof replacement, again, that totals forty, one hundred eighty-one thousand eight hundred dollars. Just to let you answer some of the past products, projects that we have done, is a voiceover IP phone system here, that's finally completed, replacement of both this roof here and DSS roof, the purchase and implementation of the ADA voting machines down at Court of Elections. We actually budgeted nine hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars for those calls and it came in at four eighty-nine, eight oh nine, so we put the rest back into unrestricted CIP. Past projects that we have not completed yet, stone library, which we're going to get to, hopefully Ronnie can give us an update on that, converting the old water and sewer facility to a maintenance shop, converting maintenance shop to file storage facility and replacing the veterans family services chili, again, these have all probably been funded, we just haven't had a chance to do them.
Question for you is, you said the general capital reserve projects to close and move balances to unrestricted, that tab?
Yes, sir.
They're not moving.
They're not what?
The pages aren't moving, so my question is, it looks like you're taking four hundred and forty thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
And putting it back in the unrestricted fund?
No, we are being, that tab is basically saying those are funds that we're going to move to unrestricted, there is another tab here, actually I think it's the second one of yours, it's titled Reserve Recommendations, I think it's the second page of your book there, so we are taking those funds and then reserving them for future year projects.
So they're just going through another capital fund, capital program?
Most of those are in fiscal year twenty-five.
Okay. I just want to be sure that they're staying in capital.
Yeah, and we're funding all the projects for this year and putting some in for the tax software and for the building expansion and that money that was in, that we did not spend on previous projects, we're funding.
I think what you said is something significant, but.
Yeah.
Out of this nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars we've allocated, you've managed to save four hundred and forty thousand dollars.
That is correct.
And some of these on this next page, if we're able to do it right, we'll be able to find out if some of our maintenance staff has the capability to be able to do all these, some of these on this page here can be done and funded this upcoming year if we have capacity in the department over there. But again, like for instance, software can until twenty twenty-five, we're only budgeting two hundred thousand per year, but like we're asking for the funding for the storage, the county trailer storage and the JCPC touch panel, for instance, we're asking for those funds, so we could get to it, it's just if we do, we'll come back to you all during the year, it's not fair capacity.
Something you need to be aware of, AOC says that the workload at the courthouse would justify an additional judge at the district court level. Folks at the courthouse disagree, some do anyway, I don't know if that would necessarily mean that we would have to make those accommodations for casuals.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, that's just something you need to be aware of right now.
And we talked about the capacity up there with the office space, so.
Yes, but that's, just so you know.
Okay, that's good to know.
It's, those numbers are coming to around two judges and at state personnel level, they round up. Yes.
All of that, is there anything else to add, that's pretty much the budget in a nutshell. Are there any questions on?
Just for the public knowledge, these projects, particularly the ones that are on hold, that are want-to-do's, when the money's available, that's obviously a prioritization process, how's that determined?
So, Ronnie, for the engineering projects, Ronnie has basically a thirty-year plan and we look at the needs as it's coming, so he's predicting that in the future, that the age of that roof, you know, we need to start looking at that at this time. A couple of these projects that were requested this year, we looked at the priority, is it leaking, is it causing problems, what is the age, things like that, and we determine what could be done this year and what could be done in the future. So we have a general guideline and then when we get closer to that project, we look at where, you know, how severe is that, so it's a long-term plan that we break apart at five-year chunks.
It's kind of what Commissioner Hall had requested and we look at the flooring, roofs, all types of aspects and then they prioritize and that's kind of how they're making off this list. Any other questions, I mean?
Right. Are you Dr. Sean Stover now or are you still Mr. Sean Stover?
I'm whatever you want me to be.
Sean, I've been able to notice that you have multiple slides.
Yes.
If I can remind you about brevity short of.
Brevity is the sole with, and I will, some of these are just really information purposes where you can look in why we're going to, I'm ironing, Mr. Messler and I sure can beat along on this.
Well, I think a couple of our commissioners have been in linked consultation with you folks, so I hope we're somewhat familiar as you start.
Thank you, well, so first of all, thank you for this opportunity to get together to kind of present our case and thank you for the continued support of our schools and our school system, you know, I believe that county commissioners are committed to be proactive to support our students, that we always appreciate seeing you at school events and districts, we saw some of you at our early college graduation and we know we'll see more in our upcoming graduations next week. Just to, and also your willingness to collaborate, what we wanted to do is kind of ground, first of all, in the current landscape, so we are with ten thousand, roughly eleven thousand students, plus we passed through local county supplements to our approximately twelve hundred charter school students, giving a total of twelve thousand students that we, that the local operational funding supports and that, and then we broke it down for you, the amount that goes to RCS and the amount that we pass through to charter schools, which gives us a per pupil allocation for all students of roughly thirteen hundred dollars per student and we very much appreciate that. At our request this year, we're asking for an operational increase of two point six million dollars, which would raise the support of the commissioners or the county to eighteen point four, again, we broke it down for you, what would be for the county schools specifically and what we anticipate would be charter schools, which is the new per pupil and it ends up being an increase of about two hundred and seventeen, two hundred and eighteen dollars, that's a little bit different than what we included in our budget letter, because in our budget letter, we did not include the charter school students, so when you include the charter school students in it, that brings it to a per pupil of two hundred and seventeen, two hundred and eighteen dollars. I know one of the, and this is me trying to be proactive, one of the questions that I've heard from commissioners is, you know, our fund balance and as you can see, we kind of peaked in twenty twenty at the fund balance of fifteen million and we've progressively gone down from there to a projected fund balance of eight point two million dollars at the end of this fiscal year, a lot of this is due to just rising employee costs, trying to meet our students' emotional needs, social emotional needs and as well as adapting to learning loss. Now, we do, I think the thing that I want to, that makes me a little nervous, is that we get a lot of our support from Esther Money to do some more flexible things and that is drawing to a close and everybody talks about the fiscal cliff, people could, we could see in schools. reflected later on, and that really is around the permanent subs and the social emotional support. We also have a couple of brands that provide, for instance, school counselors, and those will be coming at the end of twenty-three, twenty-four. So that's why we want to be, hold on to our fund balance, because we can see some things coming that might cause us to, to further deplete that at a faster rate than we have. And so I'm going to get, the, the, the critical need that we really believe that we have for the school system, all of our needs are, are critical, are important, and we believe we can defend all of our asks, but I think it's really essential, is the anticipated salary and benefit increases that are, we project are coming from the state, that we obviously are going to also pay our locally paid folks the same. The state does not fund for locally paid positions, and so we'll have to increase our costs. And based on what the anticipated cost, we have those for you, we were a little bit, and it depends on which budget gets passed, right? We were either a little bit conservative in some of them, or a little bit aggressive depending on if it's the Senate or the House version that gets passed. And we kind of broke it down for you, the next slide of the, of our salaries and benefits, and it, it ends up being just a little bit over, close to about half of our budget, I believe, is what we pay from the local in salaries and benefits. And so that's that, that's a historical view, and then the anticipated, and this is where we break it down for you, the, what we propose, what the House has in their budget, what the Senate has in theirs. So we were a little bit over on retirement and hospitalization. We got these numbers from the DPI Budget Office is what they, they give us the numbers to anticipate, and you can see what it could possibly be. Any questions on these slides?
Yeah, I've got a very general question, your opinion question, I gave a wrong answer, your opinion question, of how effective your salary schedule is, Rockingham County School schedule is, in making us competitive with competing entities for personnel, teaching personnel?
It's serendipitous that you asked that question. We literally were on a call with, we did a salary study that we haven't even released to the board, we just, I think we were on a call with them, they've done the preliminary work, and I think they knew they, we had this meeting coming up. Because of the work that was done previously, in many of the positions, if we can have the pay grades and the steps, we're in pretty good shape. We're pretty competitive with the job titles and in counties similar to ours. Where we're not as competitive is in the counties surrounding ours, you know, because we're always going to have a hard time competing with Guilford and Winston-Sonoma, Forsyth, and now Alamance. So they were, we were surprised, and they were a little surprised at where we were. You want to add to that?
I just want to clarify, the salary study is just for classified staff?
Yeah, it's just for classified staff, because the, the rates are set for the other, pretty much by the state, we follow the state schedule. Seth, Russel?
Start the answer, I wanted to hear, but it's what I expected to happen.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, I'm going to be a hundred percent transparent, truthful, and, you know, we were surprised, there are some areas that maybe we're a little bit behind, but in general, overall with our positions, and the fact that we went ahead of the Board of Education, which is leading to some of the, the spending down of the fund balance, we went ahead and funded some of the steps. And so that has put us in a, a better position vis-à-vis other counties in the state, other school districts in the state, by taking that step.
So, yeah, well, you might be going to say, well, salaries, you do the best you can with.
Yeah.
But there are obviously other actions that you take to make our school system, RCS, attractive to potential employees.
Exactly. We were never going to be able, we don't have the tax base, I don't know that I even have the desire that we can compete with pay, with a local supplement that, for instance, Guilford does, because they have a large tax base, with Salem, Forsyth as well. So we have to make sure we have great principals who support our, our teachers, teachers who have the autonomy and freedom to teach in the classroom, and are supportive. And we want to try to figure out ways to take things off of their plate and let them concentrate on, you know, the critical component of educating our students and providing exemplary classroom experience for them.
So you mentioned dipping into the fund balance, to, it sounded as if it was to pay recurring expenses. Is that accurate?
Yes.
So went into savings to pay recurring expenses. And a minute ago, you said you're not headed towards a fiscal cliff.
Well, for, for, where, where, there is a fiscal cliff coming, we have been, as I said, conservative in using the ESTER money, a lot of that is the ESTER expenses. So we have some ESTER-funded positions, and those will go away, and we'd like to keep some of them, right? And so that's, I think that's what I'm referring to.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, and then we talked a little bit, just like you're experiencing, I heard, is that's given that salaries and benefits, yes, this, this shows our, the, the amount of salaries we are paying and the benefits from locally paid positions. And as, as I mentioned earlier, that's about seven point five, which is a little over half of the, on local budget that is just for RCS. And these next two slides are just, as I know the county is experiencing some of these, we have an average vacancy of thirty-seven licensed staff members. And then the average vacancy for RTAs is sixteen, bus drivers seventeen, custodians nine, they continue to trend upward. We provided a graph for you that shows that trend from two thousand nineteen. And then I'm going to quickly, I'm not going to go over the, all the things that we have in the slide, because I know all of you can read, but what we have is, is, is kind of in priority order. One of, yeah.
I'm sorry, can I stop you just for a second?
Yeah.
So when you were talking about vacancies, I wasn't really familiar with the way the funding works from the state for vacancies, for the benefit of the public. For example, if we have an empty position, we're budgeting for it, it just, we just hold on to that money. How do funding situations work from the state if you have a vacancy at your schools?
So the state, North Carolina has a, a little bit of a unique funding model. In many states, they just, the same thing that the county has. In the state of North Carolina, they give you a position, and if you don't fill that position, you don't get the money. The positive about having a position is that we don't have to worry about if it's a veteran teacher versus a new teacher, right? It doesn't matter, we can put the person in there. And that worked really well when we had an abundance of teachers. We are in a teaching shortage, the schools of education are not graduating certified teachers at anywhere near the rate that they used to. Some of the states that used to be what we call net exporters, like Pennsylvania, are, are now at a deficit, they don't have extra teachers. And so we're in an era where, you know, I, I would hope, if I could wish on me from the state, is that we had that salary flexibility, and salaries has hurt me speaking about that a lot. And we could do things like, do some things for our teachers. So for instance, a lot of our teachers stay after school to do tutoring, they support clubs, and that type of funding has to come out of the local budget. We could have, if we had some positions that we just couldn't fill and knew that there was no path forward, we would have loved to have used that money to do some things like that. We're obviously not going to take that money and put it in recurring, but we have the, we would love the ability to use that kind of as a non-recurring basis, but we just don't have that flexibility.
No, I guess my thought process is, with the number of vacancies that you do have, it seems like with the way that the funding comes from state, there should be extra incentive to make sure that we're filling these positions.
Yes, and, and we are trying hard, but a lot of these positions, you know, this is a school psychologist, for instance, nationwide problem, where I was previously, we paid ours, I think we started off at over a hundred thousand dollars, we couldn't get a school psychologist with that pay. And so it's just some of the specialty in, you know, high school science and math positions, for instance. If you are able to teach high-level math, you have a lot of job opportunities in front of you. CTE positions is another area that we struggle, that we need, and we would love flexibility from the state as far as licensing, because, you know, if, if you can teach kids how to be HVAC or, or electrical or any of that, you can probably make a whole lot more money doing it. And so those are the, in certain areas, we have a harder time, special ed is another one of those areas, that we have a hard time recruiting those. And we can get to you, we actually have, I, I did not put it in my slides, but I asked our HR department to kind of like give to me in preparation for this, kind of all the areas where we have our vacancies, so we can follow back up instruments and provide that for you.
But there are some positions that are funded with local dollars, right?
Yes, yes, we, we do.
And that money doesn't come back to us when they're not paid.
No, we put that in our reserve fund, and, and then, right, yeah. Okay, and so as I said, we, we have, the next ones, I'm not going to really, I'm going to talk very briefly about, what we're asking from the Score Center, which is our alternative school, we're asking for a little bit of an increase to add a behavior health specialist, a classroom teacher, and a CTE teacher. And this is, we, the team went to go look at the exemplary programs in Lincoln County, and that's one of the ideas that we brought back that we think would work really well in the program, to provide them some job skills and some certifications. We're right now primarily targeting manufacturing, because we know we're having, we have, we're going to see an increase in that. And Dr. Kimmel, the, the state has a manufacturing kind of pathway, I think, in hundred hours, and that would be our plan to offer that. You know, some of these, our students have a hard time with behavior skills, and so we would teach the skills they need, and it wouldn't be that you were at score for this amount of time, we would change it so that you were at score based on your ability to demonstrate the skills that are needed to be successful. I used to be an alternative schools teacher back a long, long time ago, and that is the model we use, and it's, it's very effective. And so we, we don't assume kids come to us knowing how to follow corrections, knowing how to kind of control their emotions, so the staff would be trained on how to teach those skills, and the behavior health specialist would be a key.
But that, that program would be available not just at Score Center elsewhere, too, right?
Well, the, the, we would try it at the Score Center, because it's pretty intensive the one I'm, I'm envisioning, and so, what, you're talking about the CTE?
Yes.
CTE, we would actually have a CTE teacher for the Score Center.
I, but would it be available at the other schools?
Oh, the main, yes, that, that program, yes, we are, we are going to, we are planning to provide that pathway.
What's the grade range for the Scores?
Excuse me?
What's the grade range? The, yeah.
Oh, six, the grade range at Score is six to twelve.
Why are we not sending the K through five kids?
We have a different program for them.
Habitual problem kids.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, but habitual problem kids, why are we not sending them somewhere?
Well, we do have a program, it's our day treatment program that's located at the Washington Learning Center, and most of our kids in K through five, there really is some emotional skills that are, that are, can, a lot of them can be traced back to what's hap, is happening in Harlem, and I think the day treatment, which is, they work, they spend time learning, but they work just as much with mental health professionals and specialists to address those needs. If, you know, there's a real fine line, too, between what's a habitual problem that's driven by some mental health difficulties, and, you know, what is defiance. And we have to be very careful, because there's a lot of federal regulations when it comes to our youngest students, to make sure that we're not keeping them out of school and providing an appropriate free education for them.
I just hope that we're not caving to the habitual problem at the expense of the other students.
Exactly. I, I agree, and I believe that our principals are very good at that. You know, kids have to be free to learn, teachers have to be free to teach, and.
And discipline.
Right, and, and I'll just pivot towards, that's one of the reasons why we're asking for the intervention specialist, right? To take care of those kids that are kind of like on the cusp, because our day treatment program, I think, is exemplary. Our high school six through twelve program has not reached that level, and, and we want to make it as exemplary as the day treatment program, but the intervention specialist would provide that support, and specifically, they would be able to come into the classroom, help the teacher on like, here's some things that you might want to try, but also work with those, those students, and that's why we think it's a critical need.
So we're asking to keep those problem kids in the regular classroom. We're taking addition, we're asking to take additional steps to keep them in the regular classroom, is that what you understand?
No, I wouldn't characterize it as that. I think I'd characterize it as making sure that we have some professionals who can understand and diagnose the needs, and see if, if keeping this student in the regular classroom works. If it doesn't, maybe special ed services, we're going to move them. If it doesn't even work in special ed services, we have the day treatment program. So what we try to do is kind of steps of intervention, because, you know, as we all know, the best education experience is working with a teacher in a classroom with your peers. Sometimes kids have needs that don't allow them to do that, so we want to take an incremental approach without seriously damaging the experience of the other students in the classroom.
How many students in each program?
I don't have those numbers off, I think we have approximately forty at the six through twelve, I don't have the numbers in the day treatment, it's not too far from there.
Yeah, I understand you're working on a pathway program for entering ninth graders, you want to address that? That's separate from this other pathway that you're investigating for CTE, CTE training at the Score Center, right?
Yes, what, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to create pathways for all of our students so that it's coherent. What we want to do is, we want to identify the industries in this area where there are more available jobs, and make sure that our training aligns with what the industry, what the jobs available are. There's some things that are really nice and people like to teach, but if we can't get our jobs and our kids employed in jobs with a living wage, then it doesn't really matter, we're kind of wasting their time, and we don't want to do that. We also see that as a key assistance for the county for economic development, because we want to have kids trained and ready to take the jobs that we have in the area. And we're working with, you know, Economic Development Office to create those pathways, and also with Dr. Kinnlaw. The goal is to take advantage of the Workforce Development Center and be able to have kids come into the Workforce Development Center to take some of the CTE classrooms, and just maximizing the talent we have in the county and working collaboratively. That's our, that's going to be a big push for us.
How's a parent going to know of their student's progress?
Well, that's, there's a couple of things. The state is, is looking at a software that we take, and starting in middle school, we'll take their interest, they'll do a lot of interest surveys, and it says, hey, based on what you've said, you might want, you might go into this area, you might go in this area. In a previous district, what we actually did is, we had a guide for every student that said, this is where you are, if you want to go down this pathway, this is what you have to do, if you want to go down this pathway, this is what you have to do. What we've done this year is, we've taken that idea, and we've developed an online registration system that has all of that laid out, that teachers and students, as their scheduling, can look exactly at all what we have available, all the rules, including CCP classes, which are the College and Career Promise classes, the CTE available, yeah.
How's the parent going to know?
The parent has access to that site, so that's available, too. And what we want to do is, we want to give the parent this guide, and go over, have with, our counselors go over it with them, and the students say, this is where you are, and if you're behind, this is the kind of the pathway you need to take, and if you want to do this thing, let's say you want to go into nursing, you should probably take these classes, or this is available at the community college. So our guide to college and career.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, please, sir. You had mentioned on the Score Center that your primary focus can be on manufacturing, jobs, and that.
Yes. take these classes, or this is available at the community college. So, uh, our guide to college and career.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, please, sir. You had mentioned on the Score Center that your primary focus can be on manufacturing jobs and that. So when is it going to be our primary focus to, to focus on the trades jobs? When, when are we going to do that? I mean, just in the last month, we've been talking, there's a lot of talk about this AI, artificial intelligence. That's going to take the white collar jobs. That ain't going to bother people in my industry because they ain't invented, they ain't invented a computer that can pull a hammer yet.
Yeah.
And so when are we going to start seeing some progress towards that?
That, that is one of our projected pathways. So we've got manag, manufacturing, trades, healthcare, and then, you know, computer technology. So those are the four pathways that we're primarily looking at. So thanks for that question, Val, because it's a need and it, it, it's a really quick pathway for our kids to get a, a living wage, actually a, a great wage, right? And then if we're doing our job correctly, they can start out as apprentices, or they can start out as, you know, with their, their initial licenses and work their way up, and then they can open up their own businesses, you know, like you have. And so, yeah, it's an important aspect of it, and that's one of the areas where we have jobs.
So in, in respect for you, having been here a year or so, so I'm going to go back. I've been talking about this since 2016. I've been told we're going to do this, we're going to do this, we're going to do this. So how close are we to, to doing some of this stuff, you know?
I, I, I feel like we're close. The goal is that to, um, we will really kick this off in earnest the 24, 25 school year. Again, in conjunction with Workforce Development Center. Uh, you know, we have buses that go there now. We want to really ma, maximize that and maybe even relook at our schedules so the kids could maybe spend a couple of, of class periods at the college doing some of those, those trades and, and the other courses that the community college offers.
I think that's a great question. Are you getting any help from the tradesmen in establishing this program?
I don't think we've asked yet from the tradesmen because we're in the planning stages. We're, we're trying to identify those pathways, and we're almost done. And then we actually have a meeting scheduled with Dr. Kim Law and our staff next week where we're going to actually put a little bit more details into this, and I think we'll have more after that. So I think what we've done is we've agreed in principle that these are areas that we need and we want to cooperate, and we feel like there's a path to do so. Now the drinking park is actually putting it all together. And we've been working with a consultant who's helped us.
Well, I hope we ain't gone down a rabbit hole too much yet.
No, 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 sir. So there's this Core Center, and then permanent subs is something that we have with extra funding. That, that's, those are one of the, the areas that we have used extra funding that we won't be able to continue to sustain after extra funding. Extra duty pay is a small investment, it's kind of what I talked about earlier, for our teachers, that we would set the set rate for all extra duty pay. This could be sponsoring a club, this could be tutoring, this could be staying at your school to plan. We would allocate on a per pupil basis to every school a certain amount of money. And then the school would come up with a plan, and we're not going to dictate that you must have everybody in tutoring, or you must have everybody doing planning or staff development. We would let the schools design it with their teachers to meet the needs that they have. And then...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I had to go back, but for the permanent substitutes, I do have a couple of questions about that. So salary-wise, how much salary, what was the percentage of salary of permanent substitutes or school teacher, sort of licensed teacher?
Yeah.
They're about $15,000 an hour.
Yeah.
Okay.
So they're, they're pretty much a TA that has a specific duty of, of being, of being available to sign.
Okay. And this would be 100% county funds for these positions?
Yes, they would have to be.
I guess my concern is, when we have this many vacancies for permanent teachers, those are state funds that don't come out of our small pot that we have for the county versus we were paying for a TA at every school. That's, that's a pretty big ask as opposed to trying to work on filling these positions.
Yeah, and that has to be a priority, and, you know, we know we're not getting, we're not attracting, because of the competition around us, some of the new college graduates. So part of our, our planning for next year is wanting to be, to figure out how we can grow our own. We have some other rural counties that are similar, like Edgcombe County is doing a great job. They, I think they have 18 high school students that are committed to going and teaching. They spent two years at the community college, and they partner with a university, and I'm not sure which one Edgcombe does, for the final two years, and then they agree to come back to the county for three. So it's kind of like our own teaching program, but it's with local students. And that's what I've found, is our local educators are amazing. They know the kids, they understand how to relate to our students, and they do a good job. So we want to grow our own. They feel our loyalty. I've said this many times, that our folks feel a real connection to the county, and they would like to stay, we can give them a pathway to do so. And so that's one we're exploring. We want to see what that program looks like. We have some ideas on how they fund it, and we also wait for the community using some private funding to support that for those two years.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. So we have to address the underlying problem, I agree. And then we've kind of already gone over the interventionist, and then the last thing that we have is just, we've had some grants for arts funding and music, like we have the All County Band, which is, in this, we invite the community charter companies to play with our All Band, County Band, and we just wanted to keep those. And that's a, a small ask of $60,000. And we have the same thing with athletics. No, the culture, I'm sorry, I got that clipped. That's an ask of $15,000 for the All County events. And then we have, for each of our high schools, we've been lucky from the state to get some funding to take care of like just lawnmowers, washing machines. An industrial washing machine costs a, a lot of money, and we try not to use our capital funds for things like that. The schools do a lot of fundraising, the boosters do that. We have had, I think, about $85,000 over the past two years from state funds to take care of athletic equipment, and it's been real transformative for our schools. Other questions?
Joe, question? Not in regards to the presentation. I've got some questions about their budget that they presented to us. Is that the appropriate time for that, or was there something else? Good? Okay. So your budget process, you know, we were presented with y'all's budget and this binder. Is that something you worked with, with the team at Central Office? The two of you, is primarily it?
Well, I, and our leadership team.
And as far as the details with the budget, do you have board members within put before to present with the board, or is it something that primarily the two of you put together and your leadership team and then present it to the board? Do you have a committee of some sort?
Typically, we need our directors that are over certain programs. We develop our budget, present it to the board, incorporate it into this master budget. We would have a work session with our board around February, something like this. We would usually give them the budget about the end of February, have the work session around the end of February, then have another, or at a regular board meeting in March, we'd have another formal discussion with the board as well as a public hearing. And then we would take it to them for approval in April to bring to you for, or for a presentation to be as our budget.
And that's the same process for the operations part of your budget and the capital part of your budget, is that right?
Yes, sir.
So with the capital part of your budget, there's also an Excel spreadsheet that Miss Young updates periodically, right? And then we've also had a, a, a plan that was, I guess loosely agreed upon with the committee and, and then presented to... So in your budget, I believe the capital part is behind the tab, capital outlay fund? And it, I believe on that outlay fund, there's a few things. If it's, you go to the second page of that fund, your appropriation number is one, I think the fourth one down, furniture and equipment. Last three numbers on that's 541. And, and you see 150,000 for '23, '24, 100,000 for '22, '23, and then in the comments, you got 155,000. What's, is that just a typo or...
That's probably just a typo. That was probably, that's for the generator at New Vision. And I think it actually came in at 153.
Okay.
But it was probably where, they, we just weren't sure exactly how much it was going to be. So that, I would, I would just say it's a typo.
Okay. And further down that page, there's a place that says auditorium. And the last ones on, well, you got a lot of 529s on there, but you saw I say auditorium, and then it's 400,000, and then zero. So on the capital improvement plan, I don't believe Morehead was on there, but I see it on here, and I believe there was something from McMichael on the capital improvement plan. So I'm just not sure how the, those things are getting mixed as far as the schools and whether we've got all the information in here compared to some other things that have been presented.
Yeah, it gets, it, since we've been able to utilize restricted sales tax, which we're so thankful for, it is a little bit more confusing than in years past where we had our capital budget, which is our appropriation from the county. Now we have our restricted sales tax that we request and we have to spend to get reimbursed for. So sometimes those, they're in the same capital budget for us, but they're, we still have to keep them separate. So I think in creating the comment side, that probably didn't get updated between both when you're looking at what we want to have restricted sales tax versus our capital budgets. This is really our request from, to the county for what we see as our capital needs.
Yeah, and, and I think what you're seeing is a lag as new superintendent. I wanted to, I, I brought in the, kind of the, the document I know you're familiar with. And this is more of what we've done in the past with the budget process, and we definitely need to merge those two together. We do, we're not able to. And what we're asking, I know it's, it's a huge increase. We were saying if there were funds available that, to, to take care of all of our needs that we have for this year, this is what would be, we are happy, we know, we're happy to work through the committee process with the establishment of what we have via Davenport and what we've outlined to, with the committee.
The, the bottom of that page, the retail high track, it's got a half a million dollars. I, I know part of the issue with the football field had to do with drainage and washing out the track, and it's under, it's short right now. And, but the 500,000 that's in here, how does that relate to the football field and the issues with the drainage before? What is that for?
I believe the 500,000 that you're seeing here is where Dr. Parks requested that last year out of restricted sales tax, along with the $250,000 match to the NFL grant. So that's the $750,000 commitment from restricted sales tax.
And, and we are literally, after we leave here, we're, Ms. Young and I are going to Reedsville to discuss those, and, and we may or may not come back to you. Our board and the county commissioner, we're going to try to figure out what we can do to be within the budget that we have. There's, were some unexpected expenses with the soil quality once we got things up.
But I guess, you know, we had already approved the expenditure from the restricted sales tax, so I guess where I'm confused is why you'd ask for it again.
Again, I think, yeah, what you're seeing is, is, is moving from one process to another. And this was pretty much the typical process that was used previously, and I wanted to go to a different process, and we haven't quite merged those yet in the capital.
And also, we haven't spent that yet, so we're budgeting, budgeting, budgeting for next year. So it's in the revenue and the expense side, so it's, we, we, you know, it's a holding place for that expense.
But, well, it comes to us as the appearance of a request for that money a second time.
Yeah.
Right, and I, I think if you, if you look at the 403 at the end of that budget code, that helps us to know what year we're looking at on our fiscal year. So 403 was last year.
And so then if you go up to the page before that, and again, this was something that we've already approved, and it's on Ms. Young's spreadsheet that you can access, actually highlighted, that it was approved by the county February the 6th, which is the cooling tower for Morehead, but it's requested again here in, I guess it'd be the one, two, three, four, fifth line down as part of that expenditure. And, and then beyond that one, I think what we've got is also on the spreadsheet, well, you had requested for us to pay for 300,000 roof replacement at Reedsville High School. And that is, I believe in that same line item, but the note says that y'all've turned that into insurance, and you're requesting for us to fund it this year. And I guess that's a little confusing to me. And then if you go down one more line, the HVAC replace repair, which is, one, two, three, four, five lines down from the top on that page, you've got an HVAC replace repair to South End School for 1.5 million dollars.
Again, this is, this, all, all these were, if we, if we wanted to, and, you know, Sells and I had a, a talk about this. Again, this is lagging from the process that we have started, that have, have yet to complete. And so obviously, there are some things on here that were not as, as clean as they may have been.
What kind of HVAC system costs a million and a half?
That is to do the, if, if we were to redo all of South End because they have just individual units, so we would actually do a central HVAC and a new HVAC for South End if we get that, from, from the whole thing, all buildings.
Seems to be the same number as the local match on the grant application.
Yeah, that is not an underhanded way of trying to slide that in, I can assure you. I think I really do, I'm not going to, I would never do that. I'm going to go through the process that we've established, and I'm going to present a case, I'm going to make a strong recommendation that I think, but at the end of the day, I'm not the decider. My, the board and all of you are the decider. I can make a recommendation, and I'm happy to work with the county commissioners. We are in the process of negotiating, for instance, a couple of groups to come in and look at our capacity, our demographics, and future growth, so that we can provide that for you.
Okay.
I've got one.
Go ahead.
As we look through your request, a lot of the items on this capital request are items that have been discussed for funding in future years. And so I'm just curious, trying to understand the justification to push it all forward into this current year funding, when, when we've talked about doing it a year down the road and doing some debt financing, some debt funding to take care of these. So I just, I don't know what discussions have taken place to push that forward.
Again, I'm going to go back to what I said earlier. It's, it's, I think we're in the transition between two systems, and we, we didn't have the coordination we needed on the capital budget. That's, that's the best I can do.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You might like to ask a question, the budget there that Mr. Burger referenced, that is your budget request that you sent to the county, correct?
Yes, sir.
And so it seems that, I mean, if we had, and I doubt we are, if we had approved that, then there would be these, what appears to be errors, is that correct?
Typically, what we do is we present the proposed version to the county, and then once we know what we're going to receive about the October time period, we know the state, as we know, we get the finalized version from them as well, we'll take our final budget to our report group, and that will be updated to what we actually receive from the county. So this is sort of like a compromise, it's everything that we see we need, but when we know exactly what our appropriation will be, we will narrow this down to exactly what we know we're going to receive in revenue from, or appropriation. or appropriation from the county.
When does that normally happen?
About October time period. This year, we might get the budget a little bit sooner from the general assembly. So if that happens, we could possibly get it to our quarter a little sooner. But typically, it's October.
But for our part, had we taken this request right here, and we would be bugging on this in our budget in July, is that correct? June, yeah, June. So.
We have, we have to.
And then if we go up in October, and you guys find out that you don't need all that, you gonna send the money back, or what?
No, you, you, you're, and, once you approve what amount you're gonna appropriate to us, then we can finalize our budget based on that amount. So this, this is strictly just a budget estimate.
I don't know about my fellow commissioners, but I believe that I would like to see a budget request that, that is, appears to be exactly what you want, and exactly what you're gonna spend, without all of this hope, so, the maybes, and two or three months out of the road.
Yeah, I think historically, as long as I've been here, we've done it kind of both ways. So when you, when you request what, you know, within the ring, the amount of what you think you're gonna get, sometimes people will say, why didn't you request for this, and this, and this? So this is more of a, Dr. Parks took the approach of, she put, she tried to really highlight everything that she thought would need to be requested. So I, you know, we can definitely, like Dr. Stover mentioned, kind of narrow in on more, be more specific, and maybe more one fiscal year, looking at these for the next fiscal year to help.
Yeah, Mr. Powell, I, I, I hear, and I appreciate, and, and this was for our operations, for our operational, I think we did a good job detailing exactly the request and the why. For our capital, because we're kind of in between and working with the facilities committee, it was not as clean and clear. And we'll make sure moving forward that what we ask for in funding, that is outside of the, the, the process that we, we are working on and establishing, will be really clear and clean, and we can provide ample and consistent justification. We did not reach that standard this time, and I apologize.
May I add one more question here? I'm sorry. The money that you receive from the state, that, that's specific, right? You receive salary for teacher A, it has to go to teacher A.
That's right.
So in order for you to develop a reserve fund of 15 million dollars, that has to come from money that's not restricted or, or specified. And the only money that you get for that, I think is typically from the county, is that correct?
Correct, that's our largest source of money.
And so maybe that would explain why we're looking at some of these absorbent repairs and maintenance and stuff that's needed, because we've not used the money in the past to repair these things, and we imported that basically up into a general fund. I realize you're using some of it now, but I'm talking about in past practices. Is that, would I be fair in that assumption?
Well, our 15 million, or our local fund balance that you're referring to cannot be applied towards capital projects. So that has to be, if we would, if we would like to use that money for capital projects, we would need to ask for, or actually ask the county commissioner for permission to transfer that money from local to capital.
Right. But that could be done.
That could be done, yes, that could be done.
So if we've got a roof that's been leaking for three years, if we could go and ask to switch that money over, so that we can buy over that roof, is that correct?
You could, but once that's gone out of local, it's gone. So we're in a trend now.
Once it's gone out of anything, it's gone.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
There's actually, as far as a lot of the projects that they've got, I've talked with Pat, the pay-go-hand, part of debt financing, there's the ability to accomplish a good bit of that, get rid of all these maintenance things that need to be done. And at least have most of the schools in a position that they need to be in. And that's something that our committee really needs to focus on, that part of the equation now, and not continue to be distracted by people's desires. And then we could actually get somewhere.
So, but, I mean, the committee, my understanding, this committee has worked towards a solution, a four, five, six-year solution.
We've gotten that part done, and now with the identification of specific maintenance needs, and that list, and the available funds that are there, we could, you know, we're in a position to actually move forward with the maintenance things if we can keep people from distracting us from other things, and their personal preferences outside of that committee, so.
I understand, and that's why I was a little confused, just to play on what Mr. Commissioner Paul said, is why that stuff was being presented in this budget, when I was under the assumption that this committee, working with the schools, had developed a plan to move forward in a four, five, six-year period.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Look, we're gonna leave details to our committee. We've got great confidence in them.
Sure.
But I think the bottom line is, if we're approving a, a budget for this year, we're approving a budget for this year. Now, we realize we are, I mean, if you were to actually return money because it wasn't accomplished in this year, I believe that it'd be five heart attacks or something like that.
We wanna keep you all healthy, that's for sure.
Well.
And, and, and I, I agree with you. I, I think that the money that is appropriated by the county should be spent in the year in which it is appropriated. The thing that, the cautious side of me, the paranoid side of me wants to have, as everybody does, some, some cushion. And what I'd like to get to is a point that we can kind of all agree and work with Mr. Metzger. I'm like, we think this amount, whatever percentage, is a, is a comfortable amount to leave, just in case, you know, who knows if another pandemic, or whatever's going to happen, right? But I, I wanna get to the point I'm used to, that the funds that are allocated for the year are spent for that year. And then, you know, that, that requires though, close partnership, right? Between us and the county commissioners, in trust that, you know, A, we're gonna be good stewards of the fund, and B, if we can, on your part, if we can demonstrate the legitimate need that we think really affects and, and can help the county, that you, you got, you will listen to it and give it proper consideration. And so that's, I think, that's the, and, and I don't wanna play the game that I know some agencies do, where they ask for, you know, two times more than they think they're gonna get to get half of what they are asking for. I'd rather be, present, this is what we really think we need, and then we can have a good debate over why.
Right.
Mr. Chairman.
We still need some clarification there on, on these points that we brought up on the initial line.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Easy question. When does the fiscal year start for the school?
July 1.
So why, the, why is the budget process timeline so much different?
We, usually we don't get a pre-budget by the general assembly by July 1. So we operate on an interim budget. So in our June board meeting, we will present to them an interim budget resolution for July 1 through October 31, in anticipation of being able to present the full budget in October. So once we do that, and they approve the full budget, it supersedes the interim.
Got it, okay.
So that allows us to spend money during the fall.
And, and most of that in the past, with the exception of one year, is because of the governor's desire to spend a lot more money in general.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Well, Dr. Kenlaw, right in the center, look forward to hearing what's going on over at RSC. Well, look, I was looking forward to this. I haven't told my colleagues, but, but I'd tell them, you and I had a discussion, and you'd made this promise of an extremely punctual conversation. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for, for having us here, to sit down and talk with you. And then, who, two gentlemen that are with me, Steve Blugger, who's our VP for Administrative Services, our Chief Financial Officer. Of course, Tony Gunn, who's in charge of all of our construction projects, renovation projects in our facilities. But you should have the, you should have this sheet right here that has at the top, funds allocated by the county commissioners to support our community college. It says at regular trustee meeting, March 21, 23, at the very top, right hand corner. You should have that in front of you. And then you've got a, another sheet that just came around that has.
I got two copies of the one sheet.
We can, we can.
Take two or three minutes while I.
Quick recess.
Extended recess for five minutes. We're all ears, doctor.
Okay, so now you should have this, this one page in front of you, that, and then you should have this other page here, that's what we passed out a few minutes ago. Again, thank you for allowing us to come and talk to you. And I do wanna say that we really appreciate your support over the years. You've been tremendous to work with, you've been very supportive for our college, and we really appreciate what you've been able to do to help us to serve this, this community. So we are, I think you're aware, for the, I think the past 10 years, we've gotten on the operational side, right at 2.1 million dollars. And if you take the quarter cent sales tax that were, that was passed back in May of 2018, and again, we can't thank you enough for what, for your support of that and what that's done for us. If you add that, we're, we're getting about 107,000 dollars a month now from, from the quarter cent sales tax revenue, because you know we're paying on the debt service for the new building as, as we speak. So if you put those, if you, 107,000 a month, about 1.1 million or so in that revenue, added to our 2.1 million, that's pretty much what our budget is. And of course, you got the capital side as well. We are asking for a 13.2% increase in, over last year for, for operational. And let me explain what is going on, because I think that's a lot of what I wanna do today, is for you just to know where we stand, and, and what we think may happen this coming year. So if you look at this, if you look at this sheet that I, that we passed out, there's five categories that we've really experienced a lot of increase. And these categories, we just don't have any control over. They, they have increased tremendously over the last several years, and that is causing some of our operational cost issues. And so like, for example, the retirement matching has, has gone up almost 100, a little over 100% in, in the last 10 years. And so these areas continue to climb, and that's causing some of our problems. And so to date, we have not had to dip into any quarter cent sales tax for operational. We have not had to do that. We don't anticipate having to do that this year. We've had, in the last several years, we've, we've been pretty fortunate to be able to carry over some funds that have helped us as well. But as we head into this next fiscal year, we do not have as much carryover funds as we've had. And we do anticipate having to possibly dip into quarter cent sales tax to help pay for some of our, cover some of our operational because of the increases. And that's, we hope to be able to keep that to a minimum, because if you remember, we, we marketed and sold the quarter cent sales tax to the public based upon us investing in workforce development. We wanna continue to do that as best we can. You know, you see the new building going up. We're about 60% complete with that new building. We should be dried in, telling what may be five or six weeks. So that's moving along really nicely. We are renovating industrial technology, too. We have some quarter cent sales tax tied up with that as well, and that would be a building that would be all welding. We had hoped to be ready in July, or be finished with that in July, but 32 weeks to get HVAC systems has pushed that to the spring of next year. So that building and our new building are on very similar time, time schedules now. So that building will allow us to go from 17 to 40 welding stations. And so two really, really good workforce development projects. Obviously, the new one is our biggest investment from the quarter cent sales tax. And so it is, I can tell you the quarter cent sales tax has transformed us, and it gives the opportunity down the road to continue to transform our college and help us to serve the needs of, of this community. So I, I just, I wanna make sure that you understand where we are, and, and what we may have to do next year to cover some of our increases on the operational side. And so that's what I wanted to put in front of you, and, and really is the basis for the 13.2% request on the operational side. If we have to, if you decide that we're still getting the 2.1 million, then we'll dip a little bit into quarter cent sales tax, as long as, as commissioners and, and as county management, we all understand what we're doing. And I, I just didn't want you to be blindsided by that if we have to go that route, which we, we do anticipate having to do a little bit of that coming into the next year. So we'll answer any questions that you have. Tony can speak a lot on our quarter cent sales tax, because he is managing all of those projects for us. Of course, Steve can talk a little bit even better historically on the budget than I can. But again, this is where we are.
That's true. I don't have the verbiage in front of me for what was on the ballot when it was put on there for the quarter cent sales tax. But I do remember the words workforce development, and I do not remember the words operation. So one of the only questions that were asked, that was asked of me when I was running for office was, you know, make sure that the money was being properly spent for workforce development. And at the time, I said, it's absolutely being spent as it's been allocated. I would hate to be made a liar. As far as operations go, historically, where do operation funds come from besides from the county?
That's right, the cap fund.
Just the county, right, okay. Thank you.
None of the projects that we're talking about here, that I see debt service on, all, all of that's come out of quarter cent sales tax, right?
Right. This is from the science building.
Right, so your operations cost hasn't increased because of the money you spent on the quarter cent sales tax on any of the projects to date, right? Your operations expense will probably go up when you open workforce development center.
It will, yes.
So how, how much does that, if, if, that, that won't be, will that be in this budget?
Yes.
From January.
We're looking at, we're looking at about March to, to have it finished, but yes.
And so after that, let's just say, once that building's complete, do you know, or do you have an estimate of what your operation cost will be? What will the increase base on the, the building of that building?
We, we're estimating that. I think when we first brought the building to you, we had to provide an estimate of what those costs would be. And we're conservatively estimating that at about 160, 165,000 dollars a year. And that includes costs for a custodian, as well as utility costs.
And so when you brought those, when those requests, I had to work on being convincing the voters to do this, not being on pocket money, okay? So when you brought that there, what was the plan at that point to cover the operational expense of this building? Were you planning to take that out of the quarter cent sales tax? Or were you planning on coming and asking the county for the money?
I think that was, if I recall, I think we talked about quarter cent sales tax then, Lance and I talked about that, and that was, that was part of the whole bundle for it. Because we felt like that was.
That is part of workforce development, and part of the.
Exactly, it's, it's all related.
You gotta maintain it if that's a bill.
That was our thinking at the time.
So in, in this case, with what you're asking for, this is just an overall increase due to inflation or whatever, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Let me define operations.
He's looking at us right now.
Yeah, I mean, just, the, the general statute, the county is obligated to, to, to fund the maintenance and the upkeep of the campus, and so that's what these funds are for. Not, not anything for instructional purposes or, you know, administration. These are all, you know, maintenance and operations.
Old grass. Pay the light beam.
Right, that's right.
Keeping the building neat and cool.
Right.
Janitors.
Yes.
Maybe one of them's gonna cut trash.
Well, Tony, this transformer, is that maintenance, or is that capital?
We can typically take that out of capital.
You, you know the transformer I'm talking about.
Yes, you heard that the other day. Yeah, that's, that is capital, it's miniature.
That's capital.
We do plan to do an electrical study. I don't think we've ever done one. So we're, we're gonna do an electrical study on our campus that will include assessing our transformers and their condition, because some are very old. But it'll include other. some are very old, but it'll include other, other issues as well. And so once that study is completed, it certainly will have some things that we'll have to address, but most of that will probably be capital. But we do plan to do that this year, if we feel like that's, that's needed with some of the age of our, of our underground infrastructure. Some of it goes back to 1966, and we need to assess it and see, see how, what it looks like and what our needs might be.
A lot of people may have the assumption that Duke Power provides all the transformers and cabling on our campus, but they don't, they just bring it to a pole side of the campus.
Well, that's what we do. But that's not the only option, right? Duke Power would bring power to each of your facilities if you ask them to, right?
If we, if we pay them enough to do that, it would be a substantial cost. We're going to be asking.
And you can tell me how much you save by having your own transformer, right?
Well, we think we did yours, yeah.
No, no, not thing. How much do you save by to go in this route rather than Duke Power route?
We don't know yet. We're going to be asking you, you know, how much would it cost for you to take over our system?
Oh, you're going to be doing that comparison? Okay, well, I'll be quiet. Thank you.
We're going to be doing more.
Okay. Let me, guys, I want to go back to one more thing.
Okay.
Commissioner Perry, because I've heard the same thing. Like I have that whole power presentation on my desktop. So I, I think that it would be, I think that I am okay covering the operational costs for the workforce 100% out of the quarter cent sales tax. I agree that that's part of that bill, okay? Now, are you going to be, did I, did you just say that you could handle your operational costs for this year, this budget year, or you think the next budget year, you're going to be in trouble?
Right now, we're okay.
Right now?
We don't anticipate, even I've talked about, we don't think we'll have to do that this year, because we only have a month and a half to go. But we, we're just anticipating next year because of what we're seeing with some of the increased costs that we make. We just don't have as much carryover funds this coming year as we've had in the past either. We've exhausted a lot of that, so that's, that's what we're seeing.
We appreciate your.
We really appreciate all of your support in helping the college break work here. Thank you for letting us come. Thank you.
It's going to be a great weekend, a little deeper spring, we'll have a lot. So I'm aware at item six, which is budget deliberations, and this is your opportunity to pick anything at all you want out of this tone, because the folks that put it together. Yes, sir.
I'd like to take a moment to thank Derek and the manager for the work they've done to put this together, very transparent, very detailed, and I know it's your first year doing it, I appreciate it. Thank you for the fine job, thank you guys, your partners, Pat, thank you as well. Appreciate this.
And you did a good job, even though it was new, and you kept up with the IT stuff at the same time, and all of these things are real important. And everybody I talked to about finances dealt with it, your managing, Pat, so we appreciate that.
Mr. Chair. I wanted to say, I'll say thank you for, thank you to me, but I could not have done it without the Justin, Pat, Olivia, and also the IT staff that just stepped up, and I had to take my focus elsewhere, so I appreciate all of you. Thank you, guys.
I, I think you did a really good job, really good job. And Pat, again, I mean, you seem to know where every penny is.
Yeah, I'd also like to say thank you, and I've talked to, you and Pat, Derek. I want to thank you for, for helping out with the school situation, too, I think you were very instrumental in figuring out how, how all that stuff could be taken care of. I don't know how you're doing, you are the best in the state, Derek, thank you for what you've done. I like this one, I can understand, I'm just a little country, I can understand this one, okay? I have problems with others, but I can understand this one. Thank you for that.
Well, let me jump in, too. Yeah, thank you, Derek. I guess my only question is, did you figure into the budget enough to replace the carpet where you were pacing back and forth while you were working on it? Is that what I say? Every time I came up here, you were, you was tracking right there, so, but no, I, I thought it was great. Pat, thank you for finding those solutions for us, what we weren't able to come up with some of the answers we needed from the school board, I know that we're going to, with your help, we were able to get some answers, so I appreciate that, thank you, Lance, thanks everybody who was involved, because I thought it was very much like last year, very easy to follow, and very, very information, so thank you.
Yeah, and, and I didn't mean to leave you out, Lance. Thank you. Yes, thank, you were very instrumental in, as well, putting this together.
They were the, they just painted everything big things.
Somebody had to put the team together. Okay, and lacking questions or substantive recommendations or comments, we're going to dive into some.
Something we've already discussed earlier, I inadvertently discussed that because I was kind of excited, so.
So I will formally ask, are there further inputs for the capital improvement plan, either from you or? No, I think we've got some things there where we're earmarking money in the budget for water sewer expansion, as well as other capital things, putting aside money. So appreciate you all doing that.
Mr. Chair, could, could I ask Lance to, kind of, for the public, give an overview, what are the next few steps regarding the budget improvement?
Next step is that we have a public hearing on June 5th. I present again to you a short summary of what we discussed today, then you all take action in June 5th.
And I want to also thank you all for making sure our employees are taken care of, and what you brought to us. I mean, it was something, I think everybody had given you that directive, and able to do it within our means, so that's great.
Mr. Chair, were you looking for a motion to adjourn?
Yes, and I warn you, just as a matter of information, I'm going to be asking you some questions by phone prior to the next meeting for items to be included on our consent agenda. All right, I am looking for a motion to adjourn. So move, lose, second discussion, if you're not all in favor of the case, I say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.